Welcome, everyone, to the October 24th City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here and at home. We have two items today, and we're going to reverse them because we're waiting for some staff who are seat racing up the road right now.
Oh, go ahead with Jerry for starters.
You want us to do the sign code first? Yeah. All right, so we're going to do the amendments to the Eugene Sign Code first. So, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just turn over to Jerry. I know we've got a tight meeting today, so.
Right.
Mayor Castle, this is your second work session on amendments to the sign code. You had a work session and a public hearing in July. Catherine Kappa is here from Planning and Development to answer any questions you have regarding the application of the current sign code from a planning and development point of view. Also in the audience today is Dave Fedenke from the American Civil Liberties Union, and he has just distributed to each of you a memorandum about their position on the proposed amendments. The proposed amendments mostly pertain to what kinds of signs are exempt from the standard permit and fee requirements in the sign code. The amendments were drafted in response to the ACLU's concerns that some of the exemptions in the current sign code were based on content, which is not allowed under the constitutions. And also, they're concerned that the lack of a timeline in the current code for staff to act on a permit application could, at least in theory, result in some discrimination against unpopular points of view or unpopular messages on a sign. As the Agent Item Summary notes, we in the City Attorney's Office disagreed with major portions of the ACLU's legal positions, but we found other ways to approach it. In other words, although we disagreed that the exemptions were unconstitutional, a lot of their concerns had to do with the way exemptions were worded or set out in the code. They weren't, from our point of view, they weren't sensitive concerns. So, I shouldn't say weren't sensitive. They were not concerns that, as a policy matter, we felt the city needed to defend in the wording that's in the current code. The ACLU attorneys also represented private parties in litigation over the sign code enforcement. And that case was in court last spring, and therefore it was argued in Circuit Court. We reached a tentative settlement with the parties and with ACLU that essentially turns on your adoption or non-adoption of the proposed amendments. In other words, if you adopt the amendments as proposed, their litigation goes away and ACLU has agreed not to challenge the amended sign code if that's what you adopt. On the other hand, if you decline to do that, we're just back where we were last spring, and the litigation that started last winter will continue and will get a court decision on the merits. I want to emphasize that the amendments before you are not intended to be a full revision of the sign code. We didn't look at the entire code. We're addressing the concerns that were raised by the ACLU both early last fall and then again in the litigation. So, there are several things the amendments do, and I want to just run through them quickly. Two of them, I think, really are not controversial at all. The first one is to require the city to act on a completed permit application within three weeks of the time the complete application is received. Staff has told us they can meet that deadline. That's acceptable to ACLU. There doesn't seem to be any controversy about that. Also made some minor wording changes to some of the exemptions in the code to make it clear that those exemptions are not based on content. An example, there is in the current code, there's an exemption for holiday decorations. We changed that to be seasonal decorations, so to make clear that it's not referring to a particular religious holiday. That kind of change. The more substantial changes have to do with signs that would be exempt from the permit and fee requirements that you could put on residential properties. And the proposal is basically to take a number of exemptions, and they're listed in the Agent Item Summary, and consolidate them into two general exemptions. The first one would be for low-density residential properties. You could have two freestanding signs or banners on your property at any time without a permit, without paying a fee, and they could be up to 12 square feet. Freestanding signs are basically the signs that look like election signs or for-sale signs or the other kinds of signs that you see pretty often around the city. Banners, under the code, are generally, the current code, generally are a disfavored form of signage. However, currently, flags are exempt from sign and permit requirements. And because flags are defined in a way that includes some content, we have tried to merge flags and banners together. So, the idea that you could have a freestanding sign or a banner would be to allow at your residence one message sign and one other sign like a flag, or two flags, or two freestanding signs. You'd get to choose. For other properties, mostly that would be multifamily residential, commercial, or industrial properties, only one sign is allowed under the exemption. That's the proposal. And same thing, either a banner or a freestanding sign, up to 12 square feet. The reason there's only one sign allowed for the other properties is that we already have a lot of signs available by permit for those other kinds of properties. So, with residential signs, there really aren't a whole lot of residential areas, there aren't a whole lot of permits that are available. There are already those in commercial, industrial, and multifamily residential areas. At the work session and in the public hearing in July, the major issues really were the number of exempt signs to allow on low-density residential properties, the size of those signs, especially on residential properties, and what to do about flags or banners. And someone pointed out that the standard size for a flag is not three by four, more commonly, I mean, it's a different proportions. And a common size, not the only size flag you can get, but the sort of standard size, if you go online and look to buy a flag, an American flag, typically, it's three by five. So, one of the options in the AIS is to treat banners a little differently than freestanding I think you have a memo on the ACLU position. So, I think with that, I'll leave it. You're scheduled to take action on November 26th.
That's what I was going to point out. We're not taking action today.
Correct.
It's not until November 26th that you are looking for direction or to answer questions. And with that, I've got George Pauling and Mike Clark, and George Brown.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, I just need some clarification, and I've read through this a number of times and I get lost in it. So, you're saying that a flag is equivalent to a banner. So, then is, let's use it, a branch of military flag is considered a banner, and an American flag is considered a banner. So, currently, it's for 12 square feet, but I would like to see the wording changed to 15 square feet. But my concern is, is there are people throughout our community that have branch of service flags and American flags on their properties that are larger than three by five. They're not the garrison-sized flag, but they're definitely bigger than three by five. And I think we're going to get a lot of pushback from the folks that proudly served and are still proud of the service that they gave to our country in their particular branch of military, and want to fly, continue to fly that flag, as well as American flag. And I've also seen some POW flags that are on people's properties. So, how do we get around that?
Yes, there are several layers of response to that. One is, it is difficult to treat flags with a particular kind of message, symbolic or otherwise. In other words, a government flag or a military flag differently than a flag that has some other kind of message, including a commercial message. The Constitution ties both of our hands behind our back if we want to try to encourage one or allow one without also allowing the other. I guess the other answer is, I don't know what, I mean, I don't know enough about the flags themselves to know whether they are, you know, required to be of a certain size or whether three by five, and we're basically asking people to replace them. It's possible, perhaps, to grandfather or have a phasing-out period for flags that are flying as of the date, but that raises, of the ordinance, that raises very difficult enforcement problems. It's a tough issue.
And I just, yeah, I just chose the American flag and military flags, but I've also seen a number of residents with university flags, whether it be OSU, University of Oregon, Texas Tech, wherever the case may be, that are larger than three by five. So, I think we're going to get a lot of pushback from people, and I just don't know how to address that. So, that's my concern on that. And then the other thing is, like I said, if we're going to go with this, I would like to see that square footage expanded to 15 square feet. And then, can you tell me one more time about seasonal banners or flags? Are they exempt, or are they not? And when you say seasonal, I'm assuming you mean like the type of banners or flags you can get, like at the floral shops with springy colors or fall colors on it, or whatever the case may be?
As it's in the proposed code, seasonal decorations are lights and decorations in place between November 15th and January 15th. So, they really are for the winter season.
Okay, so we're basically just talking about the winter season, then. But if somebody wants to put out like a springtime banners or flags, then they have to conform with 12 or 15 square feet in two signs. Okay. All right, thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in favor of supporting this change for two reasons. One, I appreciate the cooperation and the work with the folks at the ACLU, and I appreciate their willingness to work with us on this. And secondarily, I think the net effect of this is to increase the capacity for speech, and so I think that's a good thing. But I'm still not exactly sure how I feel about it, but I still believe we've opened a Pandora's box here with the capacity to put two signs on every residential front yard. Jerry, is there really any limit at all to the content of any kind of those two signs that now could be on anybody's front yard?
As a matter of code enforcement, no. I mean, the only limits would be slander, defamation.
So, I could start a new business where I got the agreement with everybody in town that would say yes, that their front yard could be something I rented out and space and paid them whatever, and I could sell, sign, you know, number of households to people and put them up. Right?
In theory, that is possible. I only would point out that currently, the code allows, during the election season, the code allows as many 12-square-foot signs as you would like to put in your front yard. And we don't see a lot of them. We don't see a lot of yards with more than one or two signs. And most of the election signs are more like eight or nine square feet, maybe less even. So, most people don't.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the political ramifications. It's the commercial ones that I'm interested in there. Thanks, though, I appreciate that.
Okay, Chairman Brown?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm generally supportive of all these changes. I would like to see the, back here on Council Options Number Two, I'd like to see flags being increased to 15 square feet. It'd be kind of a minor hardship on people to have to buy a new flag, you know, because it was over that, over 12 square feet. So, I think that'd be an easy change for us to make. I just got a couple of questions about, if we go back to the first page of the AIS under draft ordinance, the first point is eliminate the specific exemptions for contractor signs, flags, real estate signs. What does that exactly mean? Does that mean, you know, you can have two signs? One could be a realtor's sign, I suppose, if someone's going to be selling their house. So, I don't see too much of a problem there. They just have to eliminate, if they wanted to have two signs, they'd have to get rid of one of them to put the realtor's sign there. I don't see much problem there. And I'm thinking, then I'm thinking, what about at a commercial site with the contractor's signs? You know, plumbing being done by so-and-so and general contractor so-and-so. How would that be affected by any of these changes?
Currently, contractor signs are exempt entirely, and under this proposal, you would only be able to have two at any given site.
I see.
Without a permit. So, if it's at a commercial or industrial site, a permit may be available.
And how much does a permit cost to have?
It varies.
Would it cost to have a sign beyond the two that are allowed?
It varies with the site and the type of sign and the kind of work that staff has to do, but my recollection is it's somewhere in the $150, $160 range.
Do they currently have?
Sort of standard. No one else knows that.
Do they currently have to pay this? Currently have to get a permit to put those signs up?
Currently, no, because contractor signs are exempt. But that's one of the concerns that the ACLU brought forward, is that, in their view, giving rights to say to someone to pull up a sign that says "Contractor Jones working here," but not one that says "Support the end of the war" or "Support the war in Iraq," that that's discrimination among kinds of speech.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Chris?
Thank you. This has been a very interesting process because in the course of resolving one issue, you often create other ones, and that's exactly what we're dealing with here. So, we're having to try to figure out how, in the course of creating a new problem, that new problem is not larger than the problem we just solved. And I think that we're moving, I think, hopefully, in that direction. I absolutely support the idea of allowing banners to be the larger size. I mean, that is the traditional size for a flag, and we may as well acknowledge that and go down that road. And so, I think from that standpoint, I'm comfortable with where the conversation is going. If I understand correctly, because we really can't deal with content, content has become the part of this that really can't weigh into it, it forces us to really kind of work in a very circuitous way to try to get to where we want to go. So, just to be clear and reinforced, because of the content provision, you could not put in a specific exclusion for an American flag.
Let's put it this way. It would be, it, I won't say that it can't be defended, but, you know, that was one of the places in, among the ACLU's complaints, that was one that caused me the most concern.
In what way?
In the sense of whether or not that exemption was constitutional. We currently have an exemption for flags generally, but flags are defined as the official banner of a government entity, so US or Oregon or some other government.
Yeah. And it would be interesting to me if there, and maybe you could pursue this to some degree. I'm not looking to try to get back into the whole idea of exceptions, because that's what we're moving away from, is trying to get rid of, well, exception for this and exception for that, because it creates ambiguity. But in particular, since the American flag is the symbolic representation for the country, it makes it a kind of a unique element, just from that standpoint. It's not the Oregon flag or the B flag or the whatever.
I am happy to make that argument in court, knowing, having read the Oregon Supreme Court's decisions over the last 20 years, I don't give it a strong chance of success.
Okay. And your considered opinion is obviously very valuable. So, if you, I don't want us to spend a lot of the city's time and effort pursuing something that's not going to pay off, but I've at least had the opportunity to say it would be nice if we could have provided the ability for people to fly an American flag without creating a challenge with the rest of the sign and banner code. I guess I'm just saying, that's too bad. It's one of those things where in solving one problem, you created another one, and so be it. But I appreciate your perspective on it. Thank you.
Freedom of speech is an interesting thing.
It's a beautiful thing.
Alan?
So, I'm okay with the 15 feet for, square feet for banners as well. The way that this, we haven't seen the revised language, but so there's a height limitation on some of this stuff. Would we have, how would that work with flags? Because some of them are, I mean, the original one was six feet for signs. Does that apply to banners?
No.
No, there's no height limitation on banners. So, if I could be a banner?
Right.
Yeah, as high as you want. Okay. And then, I'm still puzzled about the number 12. I like the number 12, but I'm puzzled what's so magical about 12, 12 square feet, as opposed to, say, other sizes, like nine square feet or 10 square feet. Why is 12 this line in the sand for the ACLU and other people? I'm a little baffled by that.
I can tell you what the origin of the 12-square-feet is, which is that's the current, that's the size of the current exemption for election signs and, I think, for real estate signs also. I can't tell you why that's a magical number for the ACLU. I don't think that's a magical number for a court.
Okay. I share Counselor Clark's concern that we're opening Pandora's Box, not on the political signs, but on commercial signs. For example, so zoning right now prevents a lot of commercial businesses within a residential neighborhood and home businesses and things like that. So, you could be prevented, so if you have, you would be prevented from having your own business in your home, and you could therefore, you could put, you wouldn't be able to put up a sign because it wouldn't make any sense, but, so you could have someone else's commercial business sign in your property, but as long as it was someone else's and not yours, it seems like this would be okay. Just another weird example of the way this might play out because of the conflict between zoning and the sign code, but I don't know if there's a way around that. To Counselor Prior's comments, I think, and Counselor Pauling, you know, we're not going to craft something that's going to be perfect. I know that there's going to be, there's going to be several individuals that say that doesn't work for me, but we have to craft something that works for the entire city. And I think what we're heading towards meets that balance of not creating bigger problems and resolving the ones that we have. So, I like the way that, the way that these amendments are being proposed so that we end up with a sign code that works, with the caveat that I think Pandora is going to come screaming out soon as we adopt this, but maybe not.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think it'd be easy to lament all of the things that we can and cannot do based upon free speech or prevention of free speech. However, that's just the way it is. Signs seem to be the same way, and quite often, 12-square-feet or whatever it may be, is, seems arbitrary. But the only thing that's important to me personally is that whether or not the 12-square feet or whatever size we decide is arbitrary, the uniform application is something that's very important to me. And so, I have a couple of questions surrounding enforcement. Currently, if somebody has a sign that's too large, how is it enforced that uniformly across the, across the city?
How is the sign code enforced?
Yes.
Across the city?
Yeah.
Basically, it's a complaint-driven process. When the city, staff receives a complaint about an unlawful sign, you know, I can't describe step by step, but from the files I have seen, basically, staff contacts the property owner several times, explains what's wrong, offers to meet with them, does their best to secure voluntary compliance. So, we don't have a lot of actual enforcement actions that go forward, because usually, property owners will, once they hear that the sign they have is out of compliance, they fix it.
So, the, then, you said the word several. So, the staff will contact several times before a, before any punitive action is taken. Then a second question surrounding that is every complaint that is received, is every complaint acted upon?
I'd have to defer to enforcement staff for the answer to that one. I can't tell you.
Anybody here answer that?
Is the question?
Is every complaint acted upon?
To my understanding, it is, if there is a violation.
Come up here, you have to just speak into a.
I'm not exactly enforcement staff, but to my understanding, it is acted upon if there's a violation. And as Jerry said, we give the property owner every opportunity to comply. We give them timelines. We have that conversation with them to be able to succeed with the code. And then ultimately, and this is not that common, I don't think, with signs, if we don't receive compliance within a certain time period after we've worked with them, then we have the ability to assess a civil penalty.
How often does that happen?
On signs? I don't, oh, hello. Hi, you are here. Come on up. I didn't see her behind me. Thanks, Michelle.
I warned you of the Housing Council's board.
Yeah.
You warned me, but you didn't give me details.
Let me introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Rochelle Nicholas, and I supervise the co-compliance team that would enforce on signs. We actually issue very few civil penalties, and we issue civil penalties after a pretty lengthy process and, you know, orders to correct. Many times, we go out to the site and talk to owners. The challenging part is on commercial signs when we are dealing with an owner versus a tenant. Ultimately, the owner's responsible. Trying to get the tenant to comply is a little more challenging. But there is a length, a process that is followed before civil penalties are issued.
So, do we have, do we have enforcement officials that visit the site? Is that what I heard you saying?
We do.
Do they visit the site prior to issuing a citation or prior to issuing a warning or a request for compliance?
Staff don't, it depends on how the complaint come in, comes in. Staff don't always go to the site before an order to correct is issued, but definitely before a civil penalty is issued.
So, it's not, back to the word arbitrary, is it arbitrary whether or not a staff member goes out and visits the site prior to the correction note that's being issued?
No, they, there's usually some, something that comes in on the complaint that there, that there's a pretty good chance that it's a repeat occurrence or... that there's a pretty good chance that it's a repeat occurrence, or, yeah, there's usually a pretty good reason that they're not going out and inspecting ahead of time.
Do you have any flags that identify when a complainant repeatedly complains? That is to say, a complainant is the perpetrator of lots and lots of complaints?
Do we have a flag?
Is there any way to track if one complainant seems to be issuing an ordinate amount of complaints?
We know who the complainants are, yes.
You do, okay. And the complainant, that's not public record?
If they request to remain confidential, that's not public record.
Which, which leads us to the possibility that an anonymous complainant can be actually filing a complaint that results in a civil penalty for somebody?
No. They, for, sign complaints cannot be anonymous. They, they can remain confidential, but they have to give their name and a contact number, a way for us to contact us.
I'm sorry, not, it's not public record, it's not publicly available record. So the person being complained against doesn't necessarily know who's complaining against them?
Correct.
Okay. Then, another question I have that probably isn't exactly your jurisdiction, is regarding grocery stores. You know, grocery stores have milk 79 cents, or how much milk costs, big signs, sometimes hand-painted signs. How does that, how is that enforced?
I think it's about 3.50.
Milk 79 cents, where?
Last time you were at the store, hello. I don't know, but something in their plastic bags.
I think we can't answer that question without more information. For instance, if the sign is inside the store, it's not covered by the sign code.
Or on a fence outside.
If it's in the window, it's not covered by the sign code. It may be exempt, it may be permitted, it may, I, without more facts, it'd be very hard to answer that.
There are mitigating circumstances that could allow it, or could not allow it. So, okay, very good. I think you've answered all my questions. The reason I bring this up is because I have someone in my district who has been receiving complaints from a particular complainant about a variety of issues, and most recently, it's been about signs, and it's just a standard, you know, signs that you see on the outside of every grocery store. Yet, they have told me that compliance officers have been by a number of, numerous times, with or without them being present, actually taking notes and taking measurements.
Time.
A second round then, please.
Andrea, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for bringing this forward. So I just want to kind of reiterate for my own self, that we can't talk about content. We have no way of telling people what they can and can't have. If they want to have a Nazi flag hanging to the size of whatever, there's no way, no way we can tell them that that's not okay.
That's correct.
So I just have kind of a question on attachment A under message boards. You talk about the size of the sign, but there was a situation a few years ago at Willamette, where they had purchased a reader board, and they ended up having to put it lower because of the sign, of the height issue? And is that addressed in this, or is there another ordinance that addresses the height?
Commercial.
With a high school?
I wouldn't know about that. I mean, that'll, that'll have to do with the specific facts of that situation, whether or not they had a permit in the first place, and whether or not, or whether they were relying on an exemption here.
Okay, so they have more information on that one issue. But I was just, so commonly speaking, though, when somebody wants to put in a reader board on their property, like a public, like a school, for instance, is there a height restriction?
It looks like six feet in height and 40 square feet in area, is what, I'm just reading this.
Okay. So, so for a high school, that's probably problematic, because you have kids who might want to, you know, shimmy up, six feet isn't that high for kids. So is there any way, is that set in stone? I would think that that would be something that we, that would need to be perhaps talked about, when it comes to people wanting to put reader boards on their property, that people can't get to. As a matter of fact, now the city has one on Echo Hollow Pool, and I'm sure it's more than six feet high. I'll have to think about it. Anyway, so if there's a way to look at that?
Are you saying off, six feet off the ground, or actual size?
Well, I'm just asking what this means, because it's not clear to me, how do we address getting reader boards that are higher than, it looks to me like it can only be six feet high, but there's a lot of other businesses, and I don't know if it's permitted or not.
I don't know if this refers to
Okay.
Six feet in size, or six feet off the ground. I defer to that.
Okay, that's my question.
What is it?
Catherine's actually looking to see if she can find it, but there are, it's
Height of the sign.
Yeah, I think it's the height of the sign.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was interpreting, so I was just wondering where it would be in the language. That leads me to my last comment, around information for the community. Is it readily, readily available when people are looking to place these things? Is there a FQA, frequently asked questions, or FAQ, around, around what is legal and what's not legal? Available to community, anywhere on the website?
That would be Catherine's question, but I'll just generally answer, I believe that there is information on our website, and as well as coming in and talking to staff to be able to go through the different requirements. Because of the zoning, it could be different for each zoning site, so there is information on the, on the website.
I would add that one of the things we were trying to do here is allow people to be able to put up two signs without having to call staff to find out, is this allowed or not? That there would be just a pretty simple exemption for two freestanding signs, or banners, or one of each. Once you knew the size, you didn't have to basically call and check in and go through a process in order to put up the signs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I have a second round, I have Mike, and Alan, and Pat. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor.
Betty?
Thank you for being here to kind of help us through this, it's greatly appreciated. Issue of confidentiality. Is it listed in ordinance, the authority around confidentiality?
I am actually going to defer to Jerry on that, because there was a recent challenge on that, which was upheld, so.
As far as I know, it is not in the ordinance, but it's a matter of public records law, that there is an exemption from required public disclosure in the public records law for information submitted in confidence that's not required by law to be submitted where the person requests confidentiality.
So it was by virtue of a case?
Pardon?
I said it was by virtue of a case that that.
Statute.
So is the scope defined in that? I mean, she gets to know, for example, who the initial complainant is. Do I get to know? Does another counselor get to know? Where's the scope defined?
I don't, I don't have a quick answer for you on that. I think the answer is that it is not, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the general rule is, and Glenn may know, on
Yeah, let's put Glenn.
What is available to, is what's available to staff and the city manager necessarily available to mayor and council? I thought the answer was no, but I don't know that.
The, if a counselor, we've had this issue come up in the past, now, not for, I don't know, four, or five, or six years, where the city has refused to provide, in that case, I think it was an appraisal, to somebody who requested it. A city counselor requested a copy of the full appraisal, and what we said is, if the entire council requests that, or if the majority of the council requests it, then certainly we would turn it over, but for a single counselor, we would not. So if we had
Because the authority exists in that.
If we had guaranteed somebody, well, we don't guarantee, we say, we will keep it as confidential as we can, as allowed by public records law, so if you, if you then submit it, we will keep it confidential.
And who's we? I mean, just as far as the staff goes?
It would be the staff person. The, oftentimes, these issues come over to our office to say, here's what happened, tell us whether we can keep this confidential under public records law, so we'll advise, sometimes we'll know who the complainant is, sometimes we won't. And we've never had an issue where somebody else has then said, sort of higher up the chain, oh, I want to know who that person is. The city council is the boss of the city manager, and if the council told the manager, we want to know that name, there's nothing in state law that would preclude the manager from giving that name to the council. We would advise against it, and this really isn't the time to talk about those issues, so, because you have another work session coming up.
Thank you.
But that's the way, we dealt with it in the past.
Thank you.
So I want to stop now, there are three of you in the Q4, and we are 10 minutes into the time that we need to be talking about the skate park, and then we have a little ceremonial thing at the end, so unless you have something very pressing, that is new information to guide the work that they need to do on this, I'm going to ask you to just give that, just do it off to the side, and not now. So it does, so Mike, you've talked, Alan, Pat, do you have anything that's absolutely pressing right now?
Go real quick. So the banner definition that exists right now in 9610, does that go away with the suggested modifications? The definition of a banner?
No.
No, it stays, but it says exceed, not to exceed 32 square feet.
What's commercial? Type?
Oh, sorry. That's the exemption, not the definition. Okay. The definition of banner, which is in the Land Use Code, way at the beginning of Chapter Nine. This exemption for banners, yes, would stay, but only it's at the, on the hotel motel or convention center. Only for that.
The second one is, I think we really need to clarify this language about the height, because it's really not clear whether or not it means that the size of the sign, or how high off the ground it is. And then third is, signs that are in the right of way. I know it says that affirmative signs in the right of way, but I don't think most people understand what the right of way is, and I think it would be in that 66158, or number nine, sorry. We should clarify where, examples of right of way, like sidewalks is the clear one, where there's always these signs that are blocking people's, blocking on the sign.
All right, Pat, do you have anything you have to?
Just a quick one on portable signs. That includes the sandwich board type signs that you just set out, and it's the down, there's a downtown zone, that that is permissible, permissible.
Okay.
And I can rest assured, there are no people who don't go out enforcing the sign ordinance without a written work order. Correct.
Chris, did you have anything? Okay, so we're going to wrap, oh, Betty, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just had a question about the fines. Do the fines multiply? Do they keep, if a person does not comply, then does there another fine the next day, and the next day, and the next day?
We look at each case individually. If we have someone who is just not responding at all, we do have a choice to issue another day of penalties, or we could run them daily if we wanted to. Obviously, that's not our goal, but if we have someone that's just not responding at all, that happens very infrequently.
That seems kind of oppressive. I'd like to, are we having another work session on this before we act?
No.
I didn't think so, but I thought, I just heard someone say that. I think we should consider changing that, maybe. I know, sometimes people can get fines that multiply each day, and it becomes impossible. And then, about political signs, does this change the political sign regulations at all?
Does this change political sign regulation?
I mean, can they stay up all year round now?
Yes, that's the difference.
Oh, that's good. This morning, I saw a sign that is huge, it's at least twice the size of most political signs. What about that? Is that, by the time, by the time it went through the complaint process, I think the election would be over, but.
The idea is, I mean, if the sign violates the code, assuming it's an election sign, the complaint would come in, staff would contact the person. That part could well happen before the election. If the person refuses to comply, we're not going to get, the city can't complete the enforcement process within two, or three, or four, even four weeks. However, the civil penalty could be, would be ongoing, and could be enforced afterwards.
Okay, thank you. I want, I'm going to rent one of Mike's signs. Depends on how much he's paying.
Thank you. We're going to quickly transition right now, and we're going to move on to our second item, which is already shortened quite a bit here, and we're going to be talking now about the city center skate park update.
We'll just turn over to Neil.
Okay, thanks. I won't take a lot of your time. Back on May 23, y'all had a discussion about the city center skate park proposed for Washington-Jefferson Park. There was discussion about whether, what funding source we might use to move that project forward. We heard a couple of things in that discussion from the council. One was, a lot of support for this project going forward. Another thing that we heard was, we, that the council seemed to want to fund it, but didn't want to be taking funds away from some other city department, or some other city project. There's also discussion about, well, are there some issues around the use of the bond, are there some legal questions, are there some political questions? So we took all that back, and we, our goal was to find a funding mechanism to fund the skate park, so we could build it next summer, without taking money away from something else. And in fact, we found that. What we found was that there was some park SDC funding that came in beyond what we'd projected, in large part because of all the apartments going up around the university, and that money had not been appropriated, because we didn't expect it to come in. And so we, we knew there was money there to fill the gap. We also very strongly believed that this project should, and should, should now, and should always be, a public-private partnership. And that's partly because of the very, very unique set of circumstances around Washington-Jefferson Park, and the set of issues that we currently manage in there every day, and what it will take to bring a skate park and a bunch of youth into that context, and have a successful skate park. So we know that this is, this is like, you know, building this skate park is like birthing the baby, we're going to have to take care of that child for its life, to have it grow up and be healthy, right? So the public-private partnership piece, we thought was really important, so we went back to our original partners, the Downtown Rotary and Skeeters for Eugene skate parks, and had a conversation with them. And they seemed open to doing more fundraising, and we then talked with the Eugene Park Foundation, and they were very interested in participating in fundraising. And so basically, what we're coming back to you with is, we've got a new coalition of partners who are willing to do another round of fundraising, which we will put together with additional park SDC funds, in order to build the skate park next summer. So that's, that's the, in a way, that's the easy part. The harder part is, how do we manage this thing, and how do we maintain this thing in such a way that we have a successful skate park? And that's going to involve dealing with social issues, and criminal issues, and maintenance issues, and programming issues. And we'll, you know, we'll probably be having ongoing conversations about how this will be nurtured and stewarded in, to be a really successful skate park for park users and our youth.
So I know that you have in the past, and I hope you will, again, make a priority of engaging the Whittaker Neighborhood Association in this discussion from the get-go, and through the whole process, because they will have concerns about what it might do, that they wouldn't like, and they will want to have a say about how that might be ameliorated, so to speak, so.
Do you actually have a call-in to them to get on their agenda?
I think it's a real opportunity for strengthening the relationship between the city and that neighborhood association, and bringing something really good into that area, so. I've got Andrea, and then Mike, Andrea, and then Chris. So I've got Andrea and then Mike, Andrea, and then Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. So, thank you, Neil, for bringing this back. So how much does dollars and cents, or percentage-wise, how much does community have to pony up? What would be?
Well, we're, it's around 25% is the target. We have a little bit of room to play with that, so it's not that if it's not exactly 25%, we can't go forward. But that's, we're, we're working with our partners right now to establish those fundraising goals. We're, we're looking at some, some corporate aspects, some local business aspects, some, some working with individuals in the community. We're looking at foundation grants that, that will fit in the cycle that we have. So it's a multifaceted approach, and there'll be a range that we'll, that we'll be aiming for in that period of time, about six months, between now and April.
So when we talked, when I talked with community in the past, we're talking about maintenance of ongoing, talk about birthing the child and, and taking care of it in perpetuity. So there was talk about, some, I guess I'm just wondering if this is still in the mix, talk about ongoing maintenance, perhaps contracting some of that out? Is that still a part of the conversation?
Yeah. So we're looking at it in sort of two phases. We think there might be a potential model that would involve a third party or could be joint between Recreation Division and a third party, or we don't know exactly what it would look like. But we think it will take a little more time to get that into place than it will to build it. So our envision, our vision is an interim strategy and then a longer-term strategy that might look at what kind of revenue can we generate from rentals and, and vendors and, you know, programming, other kinds of things that will help offset the cost of maintaining it and programming.
Because that seems to be, not only this park, but, you know, there's comments continuing in the community that there's money for infrastructure, but there's not money for staffing for ongoing maintenance of the park. And so it's like this, we're like reluctant as a city to, to even open the door to that conversation about third-party maintenance, and that kind of prohibits the city from moving forward with, you know, creating these other parks. And so I hope that this becomes maybe for new infrastructure as it's brought on, not for old things that are already established and those are jobs there, but as we're looking at adding capacity to those different parks, that maybe that becomes a part of the conversation. And I just personally want to thank you for bringing this forward today. Thank you. Good work.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you, Neil, and thank you to all the folks who've worked so hard on this for so long. I think that this is a great project. I think that if done right, it'll be a real asset to our community. I too have some issues and concerns around the ongoing maintenance issue, because as we've talked about before, that's an issue with all of our parks. But I wonder if there isn't some creative opportunity here. My son is kind of a, he loves the scooter thing. That's his deal. And he's got buddies who are BMX riders and, you know, skateboard riders. And I was fascinated to learn that amongst, you know, 11, 12-year-old guys and such, he's got buddies that race BMX, and there are all kinds of companies that'll sponsor even kids that age, give them bikes, give them all kinds of gear and so forth because of their desire, commercial, to have the commercial access to people who are doing that well and competing. So if we're rebuilding something that's a, you know, a West Coast magnet kind of facility here, I would think that we have, if we're willing to breach the wall of, of looking at partnerships for ongoing maintenance, perhaps that could be another sort of opportunity for a maintenance revenue stream, is what, what level of sponsorship opportunities exist. Has that been discussed to this point?
Yes. That's definitely something that's on the table.
Okay. I know that, I know that there's an opportunity for an RFP to go out for other opportunities with maintenance too. And I, I hope maybe as we get to another work session on ongoing park maintenance as a larger question, that maybe we can even use some of this as a model for how we address some of those issues.
Chris?
Thank you. Having been involved in the development of a major skate park, I know exactly what this involves. It's a big, it's a big job. And the operational aspects are something you really do need to take into account. With that said, you have not encountered anything that is insurmountable. Everything that you are thinking about, working on, or dealing with is something that can be handled within the scope of what, what we can do. So I'm willing to say, yeah, we need to keep going. I think the resources you're bringing to the table are appropriate and reasonable. But we do want to maintain the conversation and continue it about what is the best way to operate this in a reasonable way. But I think the opportunities for youth, in particular in a community that needs to provide things for youth, this is a very, very important conversation. So I'm pleased with the work you've done so far, and I think it's very appropriate and it's very thoughtful. And if I say, this is doable, it's going to take a lot of thought and some work, but it is absolutely doable. So from that standpoint, I applaud you, and I fully support it.
Alan?
I too am very supportive of this, have been all along the way. I like the plan for funding, very creative. Go for it, you're good. Hopefully it'll work. But I'm also concerned about the, the long-term O and M funding part. And when we get this brought back to us, I hope we can see a Plan A and Plan B. Plan A is how we would like it to work, and, and what happens if it doesn't, kind of Plan B. So if it involves sponsorships and vendors and rental fees, but if those don't pan out, this just gets put onto an already overburdened O and M requirement on our park system.
Yep, understood.
Yeah. So we just want to be clear about that. I'm okay with that, but I think it's, I think we just need to be clear.
Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. Good work on this and bringing things together. But you mentioned that it's, is and will be in perpetuity a public-private partnership. I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge that the public portion of that, that's, I'm sorry, that we are acknowledging the public portion, the private portion of it, some of whom are sitting in the audience right now, the diligence and hard work that you've all put forward to in your own time, making phone calls, doing the legwork, making sure money's in place, making sure that you've had a good line of court communication with the staff. And good work. Sometime not too far down the road, you'll be able to walk down there and say, I did this. Congratulations to you.
I would just like to add to that, that I think as we move forward with this, that we need to, and I, and I know the Rotary feels this way, and all the others who are involved at youth, we need to emphasize that we're doing this with youth in mind. And I think we have a lot of conversations about youth that we have, we struggle to find the right answer for. We have a lot of sort of on the negative end conversation, and, and even conversations about how we don't adequately provide options for youth. So I think this is a real opportunity to just sort of refocus this in a, in a very public way, in another new direction, and say, you know, we're, we're all going to work really hard together to provide a positive and healthy opportunity for youth in our community, because they do matter to us, and we want them to know that they matter to us. I just wanted to say that to you, Neil, because I just think however we roll it out, we ought to really do that part big time. I think that can sort of change the way people talk and change the way people look at what we're doing and what we're not doing. So I think it's a, I think it's a, it's, it's more important than maybe we even think it is in that, in that regard. So. George, I see you, nope. Okay. So I think we're, you have anything else you want to, anything you need from us, Neil?
Well, we need the motion.
There's a motion.
There's a motion. Oh, yes. Well, then we do need a motion. Okay. Council President?
Move to direct staff to work with new coalition of community partners to raise additional private funds and to bring back a funding proposal in supplemental budget number one to appropriate additional park SDC funds from balance available for the development and construction of the WGA skate park in Urban Plaza in order to begin construction of all four phases in 2013.
Second.
Second, and that's kind of an exciting motion. Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and none in opposition. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Just worth clapping for. I have to say, Alan, who needs?
I have one moment. Just wanted to clarify something about yesterday's meeting, about, we added to the coal train resolution what I inaccurately described as a comprehensive independent health impact statement, and I was, I was being confused with environmental impact statement. There's no such thing as a health impact statement, it's a health impact assessment. I asked Glenn if we could just change that, and he said, well, you could reconsider it and bring it up and all that. And I thought, that's just too much of a hassle, it's a minor thing. But I just want to be clear that it's an assessment, not, not a statement. And maybe in the cover letter, when we send this out to legislators, it can say correct terminology.
So I just, it sort of gives me pause about whether we need to do anything more to correct that in the past. Is Glenn around?
All my legal advice.
I think we should try to make it as accurate as possible.
Want to make it accurate?
I do worry about that.
I want to make it accurate.
Well, I love what Glenn give me, give us.
There are a couple issues of accuracy here. If you want to change the resolution, what I told Alan is, I could not do it as a Scrivener's error because the council approved specific wording, so that it would be necessary to bring it back to the council and have you, even if it was obviously wrong, you are the ones who have to change it. It could either be done with the adoption of another resolution that replaces the other one, or because this is the meeting, first meeting after you did it, you could move to reconsider, then move to amend the, the resolution and replace it with the new language.
So you're, Betty, who has to move to reconsider? Someone who voted against?
In the affirmative. Somebody who voted on the affirmative side.
Move to reconsider.
I have language I could, Glenn gave me.
Second.
Moved and seconded, so why don't you?
You first have to vote on the motion to reconsider.
All those in favor of reconsideration, please. One, two, three, four, five, six. In opposition, two. It passes. Okay, you're back to reconsidering language.
Now you have the main motion on the floor, and it would be a motion to amend it.
So I move to amend section five of the resolution to revise the words comprehensive independent health impact statement to read instead comprehensive independent health impact assessment.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. In opposition, one, two, three. It passes. Thank you.
So you have now amended it, now you need to vote on it.
Now you need to, okay, it's before you, the motion's before you, as amended. Did you want to talk?
Well, you know, I'm inclined to make another amendment, although I know where it would go. On section D, where the discussion regarding the, the application of surfactant.
Yes.
It's, the fact is, we've received testimony from Union Pacific that they do indeed require surfactant. I'm not going to bring that up, but the point is, the Union Pacific rep takes exception to the fact that he was told that he was providing inaccurate testimony.
You know how that's going to end up? You want to do it, or you just want to make a statement?
No, not. I just made that statement.
All right. So let's, let's just vote on the motion. We have other things to do. Yes. You guys, okay. Alan and then Mike, go ahead.
Just to be correct, what he said specifically was, we support the use of surfactant. They currently have a tariff that has been struck down that requires the use and payment of surfactant by the coal companies. They took them to court, and that is currently, my understanding is that currently is not the case, and there is no requirement at this time. But the railroads support the use of it, but they can't get them, the coal companies to pay for it. So the fact that there is no use of surfactant because it costs between $50 and $150 million a year by the coal companies, and they don't want to pay it.
Mike?
The other evening, we had a representative from Union Pacific, and I apologized to him for being called a liar to his face. He decided that he was well, well offended by that, much more interested in good, ongoing good relationship. And so he said while what was said was obviously inaccurate, he was willing to let it go.
Now are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Please vote on the motion amended. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. In opposition, one, two, three. It passed. Thank you. Tied that one up. And now, we're at a point in our meeting, I always sort of take the point of view that even though when people make shifts and changes in their lives, like Councilor Ortiz leaving us, that, that I, although I regret it, although I look forward to Claire coming in, but because I will miss her so much, I regret it, but I always want to approach it as a celebration of the service that she's given to us. And I'm going to ask, start it out with, George, would you like to, as council president, would you like to present this to Councilor Ortiz?
I certainly would. And this is what it says. It says, Andrea Ortiz, in grateful recognition of your years of service to the community as a Eugene City Councilor, January 2005 to October 2012.
Going to come over?
And I'd like to read the quote from Jimmy Carter. "The test of a government is not how popular it is with the powerful and privileged few, but how honestly and fairly it deals with the many who must depend on it."
So I want to give us each an opportu, we, we actually had some special cupcakes that we had in the room there today in celebration of all that Andrea's contributed to our council and to our city. And I want to ask if anybody else has any comments they'd like to make? George?
As soon as I get Andrew's attention. Andrew, I just want to, I know, you're no longer on the council. I just want you to know, Andrew, that over years, I've watched you grow as a counselor, and it's, you know, with the utmost respect that I say that, you know, I have never seen anybody with so much passion, compassion, dedication, and humor at this table that, that you've shown over the past eight years. And I, like the mayor, will definitely miss you on the council. I wish you wouldn't leave, but I understand what it's like trying to work a full-time job with odd hours and hold down the council work, but I'm sure we'll, we'll see you again, and we'll always keep, at least I will, always keep a place in my heart for you. You've been a great, great asset to this community over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any else? Pat?
A number of things laments, once again, I'll use the word lament, that I, that I would have regarding your leaving the council, Andrea. The strongest is that soon from having a 25% membership on the Eugene City Council, the Bethel, former Bethel School Board members will have a zero, and that, I do lament that. So congratulations on your great work, both as a school board member, as a, and just as a, as a community member in general. Thank you very much, Andrea.
Alan?
So Andrea, I just wanted to say thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure working with you. I appreciated your insights and your, your perspective and your humor, and, and you always had something to say that was worth hearing. So I very much appreciated that and the service. Having, being a council, I know what it takes to do all of that and, and having a full-time job and doing council, and I know it's a strain on family and on, on your personal time. So very much appreciated all that you put forth, and I'm very looking forward to the, hopefully the new council that comes in, in Claire Serat, I think she'll do a fine job as well. Thanks.
Chris?
We came on together, and so we're kind of colleagues from that standpoint, and I've always enjoyed the fact that we have really worked to achieve the same kind of outcome, which is in part about the decisions we make, but it's also in part about the body that we belong to. And I think you have had the same approach that I have, is that a body that functions well together makes good decisions. And I think that's what I'm going to miss a lot about not having you here. And as we all know, one of our obligations as public officials is to always find our replacement. And I'm, and I think that you have done an admirable job. And so when I look at the future, I'm incredibly optimistic that your replacement will be every bit as thoughtful and as deliberate as you are, and I look forward to that. So my future's optimistic even as my past is bittersweet and sad.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with a lot of the other things that would, that have been said already, and I'd like to add that. It's been a pleasure for me to serve with you. There's always this dynamic tension that exists between, when you're, when you're a counselor, between representing your community and your points of view and your supporters and the stuff that's in your heart, that, and at the same time, the, the need to accomplish something in a group setting where you have to work together with people you may not agree with and kind of make compromises and get things done. And I've always admired the way you've handled that, has always been somebody, always first and foremost true to your heart and true to your integrity, and been able to find ways, while maintaining that, to find the sweet spot of working together with other people. And I've learned from you in that way, and I appreciate it.
Betty?
Yes, we will miss you. I hope you'll come back to listen to the public forums that you enjoy so much and...
And come back to haunt us.
And I expect you will be speaking to us at public forums sometimes. And I expect you will be speaking to us at public forums sometimes, for three minutes.
Or so.
Drive for 2:40.
But I'm glad that we, I'm glad that we have a good replacement who's already here, and body at least, if not at the table yet.
George?
Well, I'll miss you. I know family life sometimes has to take precedence over public life, and I hope that you won't mind the odd email every now and again, on one subject or another, in the future.
So, I wrote something for you, because it's easier for me to do it that way. So, it goes like this. Dear Councilor Ortiz or Andrea, on behalf of the City of Eugene, thank you for your service these last eight years. We're grateful for the many, many hours you've given to help guide our community through some very difficult and challenging years. You've made a real difference and helped us achieve a great deal. You have been an unwavering and strong voice for ensuring our community strives for the economic security of everyone who lives here. You have supported our local businesses and the jobs they bring, with a special eye to the ability of, for our young people to find employment. You have worked to protect our community's livability and environmental assets that we hold dear, from neighborhood trees and parks to clean air and water. You've advocated for social equity and inclusion, and for Eugene to be a city that ensures everyone is welcome and safe. We've relied on your insights and observations, your wicked humor, and at some times, your honest anger at the unfairness some in our community face. You've cared deeply about the well-being of all who live in your ward, their gifts and their special challenges, and you have sought answers and solutions in a very practical way. Your insights into our health system have been valuable. Your support of our public safety system and our ability to care for people in emergencies has kept council focused on solving the funding issues we currently face. Through your experience as a parent, a school board member, and now budget committee member, you have kept Bethel's needs and attributes front and center in our city business. On a personal note, I have considered you a great friend and colleague. I'll miss you here at the council table, and rely on you to stay in touch over the future issues this council will face. I've never known you to be shy about telling me your opinions, or raising uncomfortable issues, and I expect you to keep on doing that. I've always felt that you get where people live, and the things everyday families have to deal with. I know your compassion for those in need to be steadfast and true. I also know that some people may not have seen all you contribute, and like us all in public office, you've had those nasty grams and irate phone calls. Thanks for putting up with all of that, and coming back to do more, year after year. I know that service takes its toll on families. No one does this work for either praise or income. It's because you care deeply about this city and its people. So, with reluctance, I see you leave this table, but I know you will remain active, engaged, and giving in our community. You have my personal thanks for being just who you are, and sharing that with me and this council and this city.
Yes. You're on now.
Do I get more than three minutes? Well, this is the kind of thing that'll, this will see me through some hard times, Mayor. I really appreciate your words, and everybody's words here. You know, when I got into, when I first thought about being on the council, it was because I was really angry about something that the city didn't do. And so, I kind of feel like, I'm not angry anymore. I've been at this table for eight years, and I realize that things take a long time to get done, and it's okay, because we want to make sure that our decisions are well-thought-out and really are sustainable in the future. So, I get that. I guess what I would like to say is that I really feel like we have worked together very well. When I first was elected, I remember coming to a couple city council meetings, and it was painful. The buzzard would buzz at three minutes, people told each other to shut up. And the one thing I've really appreciated about, about the tone that we've set as a group is respect. And I think that that's really necessary when we're looking at how the decisions we make for the city affect our constituents. I think we all come to the table with the same ideas of making Eugene the best place on earth, which I think it is, but how we get there, and how that looks to us, is all very different. And so, I think that that's our challenge as a council. And to each and every one of you, I have the utmost respect for all of you. I had no idea how much work this was going to be. For some reason, after I got off the school, when I, when I ran my campaign, I thought, oh, this will be easy, it'll streamline my focus, I'll just be able to work on one or two subjects at a time, we'll have staff, and I'll have, you know, people to help me. And little did I know, boy, that was like the, that was like the opposite of what it was. But I, but I, but I do feel like I've, I've lent a part of me here, and I feel like I'm leaving a part of me here, which is, you know, when you think about it, historically, we all want to leave a part of ourselves here, and leave our imprint, our DNA on the community that we, that we've lived in. And I think I, I feel like I've done that, and I think we all have. And I, I just, I'm just overwhelmed at, I'm not speechless, mind you, but I'm just, I mean, there's so much I'd want to say, and I thought about writing things down, but you know, I just, I just don't do, I don't do well like that. I feel like I speak better from my heart. And I know that you all will work, continue to work on the things that are important to the community, and I think that that's the best we can ask of each other.
All right. Good of the order. I think we have cupcakes, and that'll be the end of our meeting. Done.
Cupcakes for the good of the order.
All right.